You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily. All county offices will be closed on Monday, February the 19th, 2018, in observance of the President's Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, February the 20th, 2018. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the county of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barril started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
It is 9:31. Today is February 5th, Monday, 2018. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular session. Will you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The call for consent is first. The consent agenda is composed of items 3A through 3M. Are there any items that members of the court or the public would like to consider separately, please?
Commissioners, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would make a motion to approve, please.
Second?
Okay, and the judge made it and Commissioner Leon seconded it. Thank you. Commissioner Pettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to resolutions, item 4, item 4A. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing the month of February 2018 as Black History Month in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning, everybody. I have the honor of reading this resolution, and we have some guests that are going to come up into the podium and speak with us afterward, but I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas, Black History Month began in 1976, 111 years after the ratification of the 13th Amendment to the United States Constitution. And whereas Black History Month was established to celebrate and recognize the achievements of African-Americans throughout U.S. history. And whereas, the tradition began in February of each year so that it may coincide with the birthdays of President Abraham Lincoln, who signed the Emancipation Proclamation in 1863, and Frederick Douglass, a former slave who rose above racism and adversity to become an inspiration as a scholar and leader of the national abolitionist movement. And whereas, after enduring slavery, racism, and discrimination, as well as challenges and obstacles related to the fight for equal rights, millions of African-Americans rose above adversity and contributed a wide range of achievements to American history in the military, academia, science, politics, and the arts. And whereas, El Paso County is a multicultural, inclusive community that will continuously encourage residents of all backgrounds to achieve their potential and celebrate each resident's personal and professional achievements, not only during one designated month of the year, but year-round. And now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court that the month of February be recognized and celebrated as Black History Month in El Paso County. Signed this 5th day of February 2018 by the Honorable Commissioners' Court.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Pettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Reverend, would you like to say a few words?
Good morning. I am Pastor Michael Brady. I am the religious advisor to the NAACP, senior pastor of the Prince of Peace Christian Fellowship Church in Central East El Paso. And to the judge and to the commissioners, we are grateful again for the resolution as it speaks to the concerns of African-American community in El Paso. I came to this city in 1974, and though there's a very small percentage of African-Americans in the city, it is our job and our task to speak loud and clear about the need for collaboration and for support. And so we honor you today for presenting and giving this resolution and signing and penning your name to it, which will speak to the Black History Month celebration this year. On the fourth Saturday of this month, we will be celebrating with the Black History Parade, and we're going to have an exciting time of celebration for our constituency and the people that we serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. If you'd like to come up and shake our hands and we can hand you all-
Should we do both resolutions, perhaps?
Would you like me to be the other one? Yes. Item 4B, approve and adopt a resolution declaring February 25th, 2018, as Harriet Tubman Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning, everybody. It is my extreme pleasure to read this resolution into the record, and thank you for sending this over to us. This falls in line with Commissioner Stout's resolution on Black History Month. Whereas, Harriet Tubman was born into the inhumane system of slavery in Dorchester County, Maryland, where she courageously escaped to freedom in the north in 1849. And whereas, she then risked her own life to go back and heroically lead hundreds of enslaved people to freedom through a secret network of underground houses known as the Underground Railroad. And whereas, during the American Civil War, Harriet Tubman contributed by working as a cook and a nurse, and then went on to become an armed scout and spy for the Union Army. And whereas, Harriet Tubman was also the first woman in American history to lead an armed expedition in the war, as she led the Combahee River Raid, which liberated more than 700 slaves in South Carolina. And whereas, in the years following the American Civil War, Harriet Tubman continued her pursuit for justice by actively organizing and participating in the struggle for African-Americans, as well as the women's suffrage movement, as she fought for the equality of all people, no matter their race or gender. And whereas, Harriet Tubman has become an American icon as her legacy continues to inspire generations of Americans with her bravery and bold action. We are deeply thankful for the efforts of this selfless woman, who has allowed for our country to enjoy a more perfect union with justice and liberty for all. And now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court that February 25th, 2018 shall be known as Harriet Tubman Day. Signed this 5th day of February 2018 by the honorable members of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court.
Second.
Could I hear, I'm sorry?
It's Commissioner Stout.
Commissioner Stout, I'm sorry.
I heard somebody else said it too, though.
I was interrupted. Thank you. Commissioner Pettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Reverend Skeet, would you like to come up and share a few words with us, please?
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Judge. Honorable Judge and honorable members of Commissioners' Court of the County Commissioner of El Paso. Reverend Skeet here in my capacity as a member of the clergy, veteran of honorable service, and a proud African-American, a member of the NAACP and the convener of the George Washington and Abraham Lincoln Club. You've met my colleague, a distinguished member of the African-American community, who has served this nation faithfully for over 30 years in the military, in addition to his service to the NAACP and the Christian community. Also accompanying me today is Dr. Timothy Nicholson. Dr. Nicholson is the head of the racial justice program for the Young Women's Christian Association in El Paso. We are here today to receive the words of recognition, encouragement, and support on behalf of the African-American community in El Paso, Texas. We wish to express to you our appreciation on behalf of this distinguished group. Even as we speak, El Paso is becoming one of the first counties in the American Southwest to pay tribute to the African-American community in this year of our Lord, 2018. For this, we applaud you. We, the residents of this county, can take pride in the contributions of our African-American brothers and sisters. Two notable members of the African-American community that are holding the name of this county proudly are our brothers Khalid and Aaron Jones. According to Google Analytics, whenever Khalid gives a shout-out to El Paso, global searches can increase as much as 16,000%. In other words, more people across the world want to know more about us here in El Paso because of a few words from Khalid compared to all the public relations worked done by government and private agencies to market El Paso. Aaron Jones, for his part, has found great success in the first year in the National Football League. He has taken the area code 915 to national consciousness through the fans of the NFL. In February last year, the local newspaper, El Paso Times, quoted our brother Khalid as saying, "I didn't feel like I had come home until I moved to El Paso. The love, the friendship were very influential in where I am today. El Paso is where I started. I don't feel like I'd be making this kind of music if I had not gone there." In October of the same year, local newspaper quoted our brother Aaron Jones as saying, "I wanted to let everybody know I am for El Paso. They have always supported me, and I'll always represent my home." He said this after flashing the famous 915 symbol with his fingers at the national cameras after scoring a touchdown. At the airing of the 60th Grammy Award Ceremony, many of us were glued to our television sets as we waited with bated breath to see if Khalid, and by extension, El Paso, would actually win one of those coveted awards. It felt as if we were all somehow invested in him because he was one of us. Being nominated at the age of 19 for five Grammy Awards is no easy feat. He was one out of four people to be nominated from a general population of 325 million Americans. Our brother Khalid received nominations for Best New Artist, Best R&B Song, Best Urban Contemporary Album, Best Music Video, and Song of the Year. Even though he did not receive a Grammy this year, we all felt a tremendous sense of pride in his hard work, his tenacity, and his achievement. He has achieved in music what no El Pasawan living or departed has ever achieved before. Khalid and Aaron are young men with many years ahead of them, and there is no doubt in our minds that they will receive many rewards and awards in the future by the grace of God. It is clear that we in the African-American community are doing our part, and it is also clear that the Commissioners' Court is also doing its part to foster a culture of inclusiveness and tolerance and to promote the well-being of all El Pasuans regardless of race, culture, or ethnicity. And for this, we should be applauding ourselves. At this time, I wish to state that all is now rosy and well. We wish to call on the Commissioners' Court to continue doing everything in its authority and influence to create an even more dynamic environment where more local people who want to invest their capital, labor, and time into the development of this country can do so. We know it's not easy to do that, but we have trust in you. We know that this county and this Commissioners' Court has the ability to address these issues by showing leadership to those entities under its control, and therefore, we want to encourage you to use that authority and influence to make this county an even better place for all El Pasuans now and in the future. As a community, we wish to thank you. We wish to thank you for your service to this county, and we will continue to pray for your good health and your wisdom as we face the future together. Thank you for your time. Thank you for attention, and may God continue to bless us all.
Thank you, Reverend Skeet. And before you leave, I wanted to, you're so humble, all of you are so humble, but to thank you for the work that you've been doing with the George Washington and Abraham Lincoln Club.
Thank you.
You didn't mention that, you mentioned it briefly, but you are working with our youth to develop their skill set and be able to be the outstanding, outgoing representatives that we hope that they will become.
We hope that they will be.
And no doubt that they will be. So thank you for all of that work, and we're really excited to see Mr. Jones out there making his name for himself and representing El Paso. And although Khalid did not win one of the Grammys, I have no doubt that he will in the future.
Oh, yes, he did.
Because he's extremely talented, but he's one of the hearts of all El Pasuans, and so, in so many ways, that may be better than a Grammy.
Yes, thank you, Judge, for those kind words.
Thank you. A round of applause, please. Have a good afternoon. Thank you for being here.
Item 5, public comment.
We have several individuals signed up to speak today. We're going to go ahead and start with Mr. Stephen A. Strummer. Mr. Strummer, good morning. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners' Court.
And you can actually, there's a little button if you want to lift up, it'll raise the podium there if you need to pick that up. There you go.
It's like taxes. Okay. I am coming forward to ask you all to ask critical thinking questions when you come here. The reason is, may surprise you, people listen, first of all, to what goes on here, but most importantly, we are seeing a massive exodus of people going to Sunland Park, New Mexico. We do not want that to grow. We want people all throughout the county system to know that their commissioners are asking critical thinking questions. My reason for saying this is when we ask questions, we learn. We learn from each other what these agenda items are about. And my biggest thing is that what will you be remembered for when you leave office? Will it be for some sign, some small thing, or will it be asking? The public watches these things. We want the public to know that their commissioners are really asking intensive things before a vote goes on. I believe in this. I believe some of our community is really getting frustrated, and I think right now, at this time, there's a lot of angst. And I, I say this not as a part of the county, but I know some that are, and taxes are a real struggle. And people want to see their commissioners really asking and coming loaded for bear before they come down here. And so this is why I'm here this morning, and I thank you for your time and for what you do, each one of you. And I feel that this matter is no small little thing, and I pray none of my words fall to the ground on this. That we, we ask, we ask, we ask, we ask. The more we ask, the better. My mother always told me, there's no harm in asking questions. Albert Einstein says, "When we ask questions, we learn." Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here this morning, Mr. Strummer. Have a good afternoon. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Norma Rivera Palacios with our Public Works Department. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Norma Palacios with the Public Works Department. This morning, I'm here to introduce our new public, I'm sorry, our new Parks and Events Director. We're very glad to have her join our team, and this is Mrs. Veronica Myers.
Good morning, Ms. Myers.
Good morning. I'm very excited to be here with you today. I feel blessed to be here today, and I look forward to improving the quality of life for the county constituents with you all.
We're very excited to have you on our team.
Welcome. We've, I've heard a lot of good things about you. Tell us about yourself a little bit. Where do you come from, what's your experience and?
I come from the City of El Paso Parks and Recreation Department, which I was previously the Recreation Programs Manager overseeing all the 16 recreation centers in the city, a brand new one that I created as an outdoor resource center at Memorial Park. Used to be Texas Agrolife, where there used to be there, and then we went ahead and took it over so that we could do our Trailblazers Outdoor Recreation Program out of there. Oversaw throughout the years, over the 15 years that I was with Parks and Recreation, special events, leisure services throughout the city, in rec centers, senior centers, wherever we could find a space to do leisure instruction. And I have a bachelor's degree in business administration, and I'm a certified Parks and Recreation Professional. I'm excited to be here.
Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Judge Commissioners, one reason I want to tell you, when we were evaluating candidates for this position, one thing we learned about Veronica from some of her past supervisors was she was a go-to person when there is a problem, a citizen complaint, or a major citizen problems, that she is a solution-oriented person. She works it out in a way that the community, the member of the community is, leaves there feeling like they have a new friend, and just in a very positive manner. And that's something that we're really looking forward to bringing on board and having also in our, in our collection of assets. The other thing is, she's really, it's my understanding and what I've learned from Veronica and also in our references, that she- also in our references, that she is a really great leader, and we have great people at our parks and special events area. And so, I think, together between the team we have and then with her leadership, we can expect great things. So, I'm real excited to have her here.
Thank you, Ms. Palacios, for introducing our fantastic new Parks Director. Thanks. Have a good afternoon. Our next speaker is Mr. Daryl Mann. Good morning, Mr. Mann.
Good morning. It's been a while. Sorry, guys, been busy. Far as anything, I want to thank Commissioner Leon for his awesome support on the blanket drive, and then for picking up the slack and getting the blankets out for me while I was out running around picking up cans. So, I do appreciate your efforts, really. It was a godsend. What I hand it out to you all, is an operation orders. What happened was that we went to the VA, and as usual, we didn't get support, or they were unacknowledged, or whatever excuse it was. So, we went and talked to Camille Castillo at the El Paso Coalition for the Homeless. She actually had more information and data on homeless veterans than the VA had. So, we're teaming up with her to pass out the food and items to homeless veterans and throughout the community. She's a phenomenal person to work with, so we're looking forward to that. We started several new incentives with Representative Rivera and Representative Morgan from City Council. Once we get a mom ironed out, we'll contact per commissioner on how, what we can or can't do. So, we know you're limited and whatever, unplugging everything together. Several are coming through our precinct commissioner, and I'll be, once I get everything figured out, I'll meet, I'd like to meet with you and then present it. And again, Commissioners, although we've had our moments of love and hatred, you all still got my respect, and I hope I have yours. And if you got an idea or something that you want to implement, call me, we'll see what we can do. I have a lot more flexibility than you all have, and I like exercising it. So, don't be afraid to say, hey, you know what? No, I'm not unreachable. Like I said, we are all gonna disagree, we cannot agree on everything. But I do enjoy working with you. You all have been phenomenal supporters of myself and my efforts with our fellow veterans, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Appreciate it. And our final speaker is Mr. Pierre Andre Uzadaga. Good morning, Mr. Uzadaga.
I find myself multitasking these days, and it just takes a minute or two to get used to. But nonetheless, it's very good to see everyone today, my fellow Texans and Americans, Commissioners Court. I'm here today to read a letter inviting the Commissioners Court, but I want to read the letter to formal invite, if you will. Dear El Paso County, I would like to cordially invite each and every one of the Commissioners and Judge and everyone with El Paso County out to the Group Think Cannabis. It's a professional lecture and discussion on the regulation, on the regulation and legalization of cannabis. The Group Think Cannabis will be Saturday, February 17th, at the Irving Schwartz Library, and I will also hold, host a second Group Think Cannabis Saturday, February 24th, at the Main Library located at 501 North Oregon. So, again, the 17th is Irving Schwartz, the 24th is at the Main Library. Both events are from 11:30 to 1:30 p.m. Not only is the Commissioners Court invited, but I would also like to invite the District Attorney, the County Sheriff, the State, District, State, and Federal Judges out to get an in-depth understanding of who I am as the Founder, President, and CEO of Emerald Star Global Industries. In addition to the direction, I plan on taking the EPTUSA.un Cannabis Regulation and Legalization Campaign. So, I basically want everybody to get an in-depth understanding of the campaign, and due to the sheer fact that America's Declaration of Independence is authored and approved by the founding men of America's own entity in itself, on hemp paper, this makes it necessary for me to also invite all major political leaders from all parties to attend one, the other, or both Group Think Cannabis forums. Upon reviewing my cannabis regulation and legalization work efforts thus far, I have found it paramount to drop all else and focus 100% and completely on the projects and work efforts we as a state and country have in front of us this year. So, for instance, this time next year, Texas will begin its 86th Legislative Session, and after having 11 cannabis-related bills last session, I'm confident the state will have a cannabis bill or several on the table again. This time, I will see to it, however, that the constitution of both Texas and America are constitutionally sound to the satisfaction of Texans and Americans who are law-abiding citizens whom happen to safely and responsibly consume cannabis. In order to maintain the power of the momentum from El Paso's victory in a unanimously passing, in unanimously passing our very own legislation of marijuana or cannabis, back in October, I find myself humbly requesting participation again from the Commissioners Court, Commissioner Perez, Commissioner Leon, Commissioner Stout, Commissioner Hagerty, and of course, Judge Voight. I'm asking for your participation in an open meeting so that we can ensure that our conversation, what I'm planning to say, is available for public information. What I plan on saying at this meeting is this, I wish to discuss the details of a proposal for a joint venture between El Paso County and Emerald Star Global Industries to host the first annual 915-420-420 Holiday Celebration. I'm hoping to host this event at Ascara de Lake Friday, April 20th, 2018. This event went properly aligned with Group Think Cannabis Preps the State of Texas and America for authoring and passing of entrepreneurially intellectual policies that centrically lay out responsible and comprehensible regulatory laws that simultaneously generate revenue and promote a safe and secure community for Texas, Texans, and America's Americans. This event signifies the first time in history where people would come out and legally consume cannabis in a controlled environment in El Paso, Texas, the first and only place in America that created the prohibition of criminalization of marijuana, otherwise referred to as cannabis. At Emerald Star Global Industries, we understand the value of infrastructure. So, moreover, green infrastructure, such as agriculture, arbor culture, botany, environmental sciences.
Time.
Gardening, one more minute, horticulture, and irrigation, just to name a few. Due to our understanding of the value of green infrastructure, we are committed to donating and planting a tree on Earth Day, Sunday, April 22nd, 2018, and another tree on Arbor Day, Friday, April 27th. Both trees will be planted at Ascara de Lake. These trees would be planted upon successful completion of our 420-420 Holiday Celebration, and the tree planting signifies gratitude for the county's participation in the joint venture, but also signifies the beginning of redeveloping Ascara de Lake and rebuilding this county icon and asset to a state-of-the-art caliber level, excuse me, park, perhaps a park that promotes green infrastructure and the education thereof. I wish to say that the only commitment and partici, that only, excuse me, I wish to say that only the commitment and participation of El Paso County with Emerald Star Global Industries will secure the project. So, my fellow Americans, in order to secure the regulation and legalization of cannabis in Texas by the 86th Legislative Session, Emerald Star Global Industries has dedicated itself to hosting Group Think Cannabis.
Just, if you could begin.
I guess, I mean, that, I'll be honest, I didn't come out as smooth as I had rehearsed, but I'm hoping we got the information. So, basically, in 30 seconds, I'm hoping to have an open meeting with the county so that we can, I can propose this joint venture with the county to host this first-time event at Ascara de Lake, and then at that meeting, I wish to, you know, we can discuss all the little details. But I also look to, you know, give back and begin building on such a beautiful park I spent the last couple of weeks there. And I gotta say, it's very, it's overlooked, basically, and it's a county asset that I believe, Judge, you should take on before your term is over. I think it would be a fantastic and spectacular project for us to work together and basically redevelop. I think, I think that would be beneficial for the whole community. And then keep in mind, the 86th Texas Legislative Session, I mean, I'm cracking the whip. I'm trying to unify families and bring them together. I'm trying to generate revenue. I'm trying to keep the streets safe. And so, from here, I'll be walking across the hall, and I'll be talking with your offices to set up that appointment. So, again, we could be cracking and, 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 you know, unify ourselves. So, I do want to apologize for going over my limit. Please, please, I do apologize. But Group Think Cannabis, the 17th, East Side, 24th, right here downtown. I appreciate your ears. Good day, and God bless.
Have a good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. You too. And I'm gonna leave this page. Take it to you.
I believe that is our last speaker for public comment, unless there's anyone else that'd like to say anything?
No, I don't have any, Judge. Thank you. Thank you.
And we can move on.
Moving on to the regular agenda, Board Appointments, Item Six, Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Reappoint Gerardo Sanchez to the Emergency Service District Number One for a Two-Year Term Beginning January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2019.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. We're asking for the Court to reappoint Mr. Sanchez to ESD One. He has been serving on this board and is interested in being reappointed if the Court so chooses.
Commissioner, do you have anything to say? I have no questions. I know that both Items Six and Seven deal with our ESDs, and from what I've heard back, both boards are functioning very well, and the board members seem to be doing great work. So, I would move to approve Item Six unless there's question or concern from any members of the Court.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item Seven, Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Reappoint Michael Diaz and Adrienne Santana to the Emergency Service District Number Two for a Two-Year Term Beginning January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2019. It's been requested by Betsy Keller, the Chief Administrator, that this item be postponed for one week, please.
So, moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. County Administration, Item Eight, Discuss the Scheduling of Thursday Special Commissioners Court Meetings.
Judge Commissioners, this came up recently in our discussions about when you all meet on a Thursday. I believe the Court indicated at that time that they would be willing to move the Thursday meeting to the fourth Thursday of the month. This would allow us time to, for a couple reasons. One, there are times during the month where the, we have another event scheduled on the third Thursday, like our strategic planning was the same the third Thursday, so it got pushed back in January. Timing-wise, with February being a short month, we needed the extra week for the February meeting. And also, it will help us financially to make sure we've already been able to close out the previous month to present information to you the last, or the fourth Thursday of the month. Allows us a little bit of time in case there is any matters that we need additional time to close out for the prior month and to report an update to the Court. This is more for public notice, but we want to make sure that the Court is okay, and then that we notify the public that the Thursday meetings will be the fourth Thursday of the month.
I believe you are correct, Ms. Keller, in that we talked about this during strategic planning, and we mentioned it during our last Thursday meeting last week, I believe. And so, this is more so for the public to understand that our third Thursday will be moved to the fourth Thursday.
Thank you. So, no action on this item. Auditor, Item Nine, Approve and Authorize the County Judge to Sign the Proposed Exercise of Options to Renew Agreement for Bond Council Services with McCall Parkhurst &amp; Horton LLP for the contract period from March 9th, 2018 to March 9th, 2019. Contract number 2018-0030. Contract account number to be determined at time of issuance of bonds.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Governor Dion, County Attorney, this is a housekeeping issue. Back in March of 2015, the county approved bond council contract. At that time, it was for one year with four one-year extensions. This would basically take for one-year extension, there will be one more meeting after this.
Okay.
My recommendation was to approve. The only time the bond council gets paid is when there's an actual issuance of bonds on behalf of the county of El Paso, and it's paid as part of the cost of issuing the bonds.
Commissioners? And Mr. Suguda was instrumental recently when we were going through our process in December with our bonds, so I would move to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Litigation, Justice, and Law Enforcement, Item Ten, Approve and Authorize the County Judge to Sign the Agency Agreement with Leeds Online LLC to Provide Electronic Reporting and Criminal Investigation Services to the El Paso County Sheriff's Office effective January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2019. Funds are available in account GF SOP Patrol, MATE Rep Software, contract number 2018-0034.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioners, County Judge. I'm Sergeant Rojas with the Sheriff's Office. I'm here to answer any questions. But to kind of give you some background on Leeds Online, it operates and maintains an electronic reporting system for the criminal investigation system, for receiving data for the use of law enforcement officials in their official duties. Leeds Online acts in the capacity of an agent for such law enforcement agencies for the purpose of collecting, maintaining, and disseminating data. We've actually been able to trial this software out about a year ago. In my section, we were able to use it. We made several apprehensions as far as felony arrests, as well as recovering property from the online database. So, we're here to ask Judge to sign.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Make a motion.
Second.
That was Commissioner Stout and Commissioner Hagerty, right? Thank you. Commissioner Perez is absent.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good afternoon.
Item Eleven, Approve and Authorize the County Judge to Sign the Sales Agreement with Morfo Track LLC for the purchase of Morfo Dent Mobile Identity Check Devices and One-Year Post-Warranty Maintenance. The contract is effective beginning January 29th, 2018 through January 28th, 2020. Funds are available in the EP County Mobile ID System 2018 Grant, contract number 2018-0033.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Tom Witten with the Sheriff's Office. This item is basically, it's a JAG grant, so there's no cash match. That's awesome. And it's basically to purchase what we call upfront finger ID, two-finger IDs. So, it'll allow us to positively identify anybody that we come in contact that we need to remotely from a vehicle. They'll just basically put their finger on this machine. It actually runs remotely through the PD's AFIS system, the Automated Fingerprint Identification System, and if the individual's ever been in there, we'll know right in the field. And it doesn't just benefit the Sheriff's Office. JPD is gonna get a couple. Our sex offender registration tracking program's gonna get a couple. So, we'll be able to identify everybody that we need to really, really quickly. That's it.
How many of these devices will the deputies out in the field have?
So, so, we're gonna get 50 with this particular grant, and we actually have the breakdown. They're getting the majority of them. We're gonna have four, four with JPD, one in each of our jails, and several with the sex offender unit.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Have a good afternoon.
Economic Development, Item Twelve, Approve and Authorize the County Judge to Sign a Funding Agreement with the Texas Preservation Trust Fund fiscal year 2018. Trust Fund fiscal year two thousand eighteen for the Casa Bon Quio project to be submitted by February ninth, two thousand eighteen. Funding is available in account S R Tour Prom Casa Bon Quio, contract number two thousand eighteen oh oh three six.
Good morning, Jose Quinones with Economic Development. Commissioners, County Judge, we're here to proceed with a funding agreement. This is a funding agreement for thirty thousand dollars. It requires a match funds of thirty thousand from the county government to proceed with the Casa Bon Quio restoration project. We're very delighted to bring this out. We started this project a year ago, January of two thousand seventeen, with a pre-application. We submitted the formal application in January and we were notified just last month that we were getting funding from the Texas Historical Commission. So this funding agreement, what it does is allow us to proceed with obtaining thirty thousand dollars from the Texas Preservation Fund for Casa Bon Quio. Be glad to answer any questions if you have it.
Jose, and you might not be prepared to speak on it today, but just for the benefit of our public, whoever's tuned in, could you just give us a brief overview of what is Casa Bon Quio?
Casa Bon Quio is a historic building that dates back to the early eighteen hundreds. I believe the first viceroy from the region had made that his home back in the early eighteen hundreds. There's much history goes back into this building. It was located very, you know, within walking distance of the San Elizario Chapel. As we know, the San Elizario Chapel was part of the old precedio that was there in historic San Elizario. So this building is very significant in the fact that there's this history very much tied to the Spanish roots of the region, the presence there of the Spanish that they explored and they became a very dominant way of life here in the eighteen hundreds. Obviously, over time, that building has deteriorated because there hasn't been much maintenance. It is to a point where if we're going to say it, salvage it, save it, and restore it to its old glory, we need to do it now. And the funding is in place. There are funds from HOT that will be used to pay for the restoration of this building.
Thank you, Jose. I know that this wasn't on the agenda, or on your script, but thank you very much for that because I think that this is, in fact, a big part of El Paso, a treasure of El Paso, and very historic. So thank you for your explanation.
So from what I understand, this is gonna be used for Phase One of the renovation. And that was estimated to cost about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we weren't planning on getting this grant. We had already set aside the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for this project and that's gonna offset some of it. And then so that's gonna, is that correct?
So I believe we originally, before we knew what the total cost of the project was going to be, I believe we set aside, Wally, correct me on the amount that we set aside in HOT funds, but I want to say we've set aside approximately three hundred thousand dollars.
Correct. For Phase One or for the whole project?
For the whole project. And the entire project, I believe our estimates are that it's going to run close to four hundred thousand dollars, about four hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
So this will help us, while we have set aside money, this will help us get further along in completing the project. Each year, we're going to have to continue to, until we're able to complete all the phases and fund the whole project, we will be asking the Court to set aside additional HOT fund allocation in the upcoming budget cycle to be able to complete the project in its entirety.
And this Phase One, when is it scheduled to start and finish? Do we know?
I would say this project is gonna probably go into the next fiscal year. It's gonna take us over a year to complete construction on this project.
But for the entire project or for just Phase One?
Just for Phase One.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
I appreciate that question, Commissioner. That was my question as well, in that we had the thirty thousand dollar grant, the thirty thousand match on our end, but the total for Phase One was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I wasn't sure where the rest of that money was gonna come from, but that explanation was helpful, so thank you.
Thank you.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Health and Social Services, Item Thirteen. Approve and authorize the county judge to execute a grant agreement in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Continuum of Care, Homeless Assistance Program for Coordinated Assessment, and further authorize the Purchasing Department to issue an R F P to select a sub-recipient to provide the services under this grant, contract number two thousand eighteen zero 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 three.
We are asking that this item be postponed. Actually, I think it would be better if the Court deleted it as it's worded, and we will put the proper wording back on when this item is ready to come back. We are working with the other interested parties on the process.
So we need a motion for that?
We need a motion to delete.
So move. Second.
That was Commissioner Leon and Commissioner Stout?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public Works, Item Fourteen. Receive a presentation on the Southern New Mexico, El Paso Joint Land Use Study website.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Gilbert Saldana with Public Works Department. Back in July of two thousand twelve, the Commissioners Court approved or authorized the county representatives to participate in the Southern New Mexico, El Paso Joint Land Use Study, which is a study to identify land use issues around the military installations, Fort Bliss, White Sands Missile Range, and Holloman Air Force Base, and recommend policies, actions to improve compatibility and protect civilian and military investments and missions. And today, I have Ms. Adrienne Johnson from the Implementation Committee to give you additional information and show you the website that was developed.
Good morning, Ms. Johnson.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. My name is Adrienne Johnson. I work for Donaiana County. Donaiana County was one of the counties involved in the Joint Land Use Study and Implementation and are the fiscal agent for it. As Gilbert said, the thing that we worked or tried to do was to come up with different strategies that would make land issues more compatible between communities and the military installations. There were six counties involved, three military installations, lots of other federal and local agencies, which made this one of the largest joint land use studies ever conducted at the time. During the study, the group that was involved, they looked at these issues and they wanted to come up with strategies. They came up with over one hundred and eighty strategies, which they prioritized down to sixteen with substrategies underneath, and then those were broken down into categories. They prioritized the categories and they came up with communications being the biggest one, airspace, energy resources, and plans and ordinances. Now, the group that was involved in the study, some carried over into the implementation, and those were broken out by their experience. So those were the individuals that worked on the different committees. We determined that communication seemed to be one of the biggest issues at the time. There were a lot of concerns about the communities and air noise and just other things going on with the military installations, but they felt like they didn't have a voice and that when they called someone at the installation, that no one was hearing them. And then we also know that every couple of years, we have T D Ys and people move out, so information doesn't get passed on. So we thought that developing this website would be one of the best tools to help with the communities and the military installations in making communication more effective. So I will start up here. Let me go to the homepage. And as you can see, it talks a little bit about the JLUSS implementation. You can open this up and it gives you the background, basically what I just told you. The implementation page, it pretty much talks about the implementation, what we do, those are the working groups, and what our goals are for the working groups. And we wanted to make it very clear that these were not mandates or things, you know, saying you have to do this. These were only recommendations, and it was totally up to the counties and communities involved as to whether or not they wanted to implement them. As I said, our partners here, it was funded by the Department of Defense, but those are the three military installations. We had B L M, National Park Service, National Forest Service was involved, Spaceport America, State Land Office, and those are the counties involved, and the cities. And on any one of these, you can click, and let's see. If I click here, and it links right up to your homepage. Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm a little mouse challenged. Okay, before I get up into here, let's just start from the top here. What you see scrolling here is what we call an alert bar. There were a lot of concerns about when White Sands Missile Range did testing and how did the public get notified? Well, if you listen to a certain radio station, you might hear, or you might just drive down Interstate seventy and all of a sudden see the sign that said, hey, roads closed, you're gonna be out here for an hour. So we put this up here as an alert bar to put notifications and any type of special events. One thing I just have up here is it was a change of responsibility, so when the Command Sergeant Major for the Garrison changed over to become the Command Sergeant Major for the General. And this also has the capability to go out and link to those actual events, so I don't know if I want to do it, but I'll just show you here. So there's a little video there of when that took place. Coming down here, we tried to make it as user-friendly as possible and we wanted to make sure everyone was included, so we have a language translator there and we think that somebody can use it from somewhere.
That's wonderful.
So, okay. Now, there also is a search function where you can go in and put in a keyword to search for particular items. Before I get to this, I'm gonna go to Reports and Maps. Right now, under Reports and Maps, what we have there is all of the documentation that was associated with the study. So if anyone would like to go out and look at that, it's there for public viewing. When the implementation is complete, there will be documentation out there that was associated with the implementation over that two-year period as well. Now, I'm going to go here, the Land Use Planning Tool. This tool was developed, it's a G I S web-based tool that was developed to try to help the communities and the installations see where and what impacts them the most. Okay? As I say, it's G I S web-based, so this is a study area that you'll see, so you can actually see how large it is. It was over seven-six-hundred square miles involved in it. It might take a little bit to come up. While we're waiting for that to come up, you can see there's G I S data from B L M, Fort Bliss, Holloman.
Click that little box there, perhaps.
Where is it? I can't see it up here. I thought I did. Yeah, okay, I can't see it on this one. Did I get it?
There you go.
Oh, there we go. Okay. I'll just make that a little small, I'll try to. But as you can see, that was a pretty large area. Now, out of this, and we'll look at Fort Bliss. And the individuals who were representatives from each of the partners, they determined what they wanted to see on the website. So all the data that's here was data that was sent to us to incorporate here. So one of the things, if you wanted to look at regulated airspace, still something.
There you go.
So that shows the airspace that is associated with Fort Bliss and the uses that they have. So say you want to come out and you just moved here, you want to buy a house. Okay. This is a tool that you can utilize and you can click on an area and click on one of these to see if you're going to be in that area that's gonna be impacted by the military airspace. I mean, there's a lot of different ones here. They have air quarters, as you can see, so I won't go through all of them. They have their A Cub areas that they put on there, which is, if you aren't familiar with that, is their Army Compatible Use Buffer Program, where they work with individuals to ensure that certain areas are impacting the military operations. And we have some other things here that actually link to other pages. So if you're, some folks, or a lot of folks that were involved were ex-military, so they wanted this particular mapping system on here as well. But you can also go and find an area through here and... Anyway, if you're familiar with the military mapping and grading system, it'll give you coordinates through your lat long. And also, on the other page that I just showed you, tell the Land Use Planning Tool, you can put in coordinates or you can put in an address. Am I on this thing? I'm sorry. Close that one out. Okay. Over here in the search button. So say if we wanted to put in, I'm sorry, address here, five hundred East San Antonio. And we put that in right there, and it searches. And there it brings it up. And if we scroll down here at the bottom, as you can see, there's multiple map types that can be utilized for this. Now, depending on what you want to look at, there's multiple maps. That'll bring it up for you. Now, I do want to say one thing about this that's great. We are currently in the process of developing another tool to be implemented on here as well, and that's called the Renewable Energy Siting and Compatibility Mapping Tool. That tool is for the utilization of the military and energy developers, as well as the public to see. But energy developers can go out here and look and click on certain areas to see, is this a good spot to put wind towers? Okay? That is in development. That should be completed and be on here by the end of March. But it's gonna be a lot of data that's gonna be in there as well. So between the two of these, the utilization should be very effective and beneficial for the military as well as the communities. Now, I'll go here. Our Intranet is what we have. That is for our partner usage at the initial stage. If we get to it, I might have to log in. But basically, what it is, when we have these energy projects that come along, and I'll take, for instance, in Lincoln County, so if you're familiar with that, there's a lot of wind towers that are being put up in Lincoln County. So there's a lot of commission meetings, there's a lot of energy developers coming in and talking about what they want to do, how they want to do it, and it's a very long process. So what we decided to do is to make sure that all of our members are aware of what's going on, is we put these projects out here, as well as information that are pertaining to them, and members have the capability... I actually can't talk and type either, but members have the capability to go out... Oh, I spelled my name wrong. And add information to this. And once the project is complete... Okay. So we have the Intranet, the working groups, what we have is the tracking tool. Okay? And as you see, there were some projects that were put out here. So say wind energy final updates. Final Update, I hope this opens. But this was from Lincoln County Commissioner who added this information out here. So it gives you a lot of information about what's going on, it talks about the project description, there's also mapping capabilities, you have the capability to upload documentation, and then the project contact if you want to add more, and any comments that may have been involved with it. Once this project was completed, it went in, and there's an option to click Project Complete, and it says yes. If you go back over here... Where'd it go?
That's a terrible...
I'll have to go back to the home, but up here on this bar, under the Reports and Maps, it says Project Reports. What this has done now, has taken that project that was on the Intranet for the partners to add information, has now gone to an external project page so that the communities can read about it as well, so that they know what has happened, what is going on. There's also getting involved, getting involved is basically if you would like to come out and see, these are some of the places that we've been so far during the presentation so that the public knows what's coming up. And we have a gallery, which is basically pictures of some of our meetings that we've had, where we've had them, some of the members that are involved, and some tours, out to Holloman, General's Retirement.
Our very own Mr. Saldaña.
I was in Riedoso, so, but... And then we have a Frequently Asked Questions page. This particular page here is for anyone who can't figure out something on the page, or might want to ask someone a question, and maybe they can find it here. Now, there is another capability for them to ask questions, which I'll show you in a minute, but we tried to cover as much as we could out here with what people who aren't familiar with the Joint Land Use Study, what types of things they would like to know. So there's a lot of stuff out there. Now, if we go back here to our homepage, over here, I just showed you the Land Use Planning Tool, and it actually has a little description of what its purpose is. Calendar of Events, that's pretty much exactly what it says. So we go out and put events that are coming up, you click on this, and if you want more information, and I have the date and time, I didn't have the address at the time, but I have the capability to put the address out there so that the public is aware of any events that are coming up that they may want to attend. And the comments, okay, our comment form, this is for anyone to utilize, so that's internal, external, anyone can put it in. And what it does is, when a comment is submitted, once you hit Submit, it automatically sends an email to a select group of committee members, and we have guaranteed that there should be an answer to your question, or, you know, if you require one, between 48 and 72 hours. And if not, then it will come to me, so I can ensure that it gets to the right person to get a response. Over here, you have some options, Ask the Committee, you want to know about roadblocks, any events, or just general comments. Up here in the red, like I said, this was one big issue that we had, so we wanted to know, how can we put this in here to ensure that the people are heard, you know, if you hear a Osprey hanging over your house at, you know, 2:00 AM, you want someone to know about it. Here, you click on that, you put in your name, your phone number, your currents. Now, up here, whether it's aircraft noise, sonic boom, or artillery, if you click on aircraft noise, then a dropdown comes down with silhouettes, and you can select and say, hey, this is the one that looked like it was hanging over my house last night. And you try to put in as much information as you can. Once you hit Submit on this, and you can upload video and pictures, but once you hit Submit, this has been set up so that it goes to the military installations. It will go to the public official there, and that will be dispersed out to the correct person who handles the airspace issues. And we did it that way because, as I said, you get people, they change positions all the time, so we didn't want to put a specific name in there for airspace because, you know, they might be gone next July, so then no one would ever see it. That might be it, let's go back to the homepage. And you also have the capability, just if you want to contact us, about how the process works, these are set up to go right to the Implementation Committee members. And there's no login required for this, I brought some cards with me that have the website URL on it, so I'd like to hand these out, and... And they're in English and Spanish, so we're hoping that folks, you know, will go out and look at this website, play around with it, because we're trying to make it as effective as possible. Like I said, we're working with another vendor to do the energy tool, but we're also doing some little fixes here and there to make it more user-friendly.
I appreciate the presentation, and thank you to Gilbert for, Mr. Saldaña, for representing El Paso County on the committee. I did have a question, in the past, I don't know that this is prevalent in El Paso County right now on the Far East side, but there had been talks about, in the future, as missions on Fort Bliss's site that abuts El Paso County, that there may be the need to look at land use compatibility issues. Does the committee look at potential long-term issues and work with interested stakeholders like the county, maybe the governor's office, to ensure that if legislation is necessary to help buffer an area that that is being done, or is that up to each installation? I didn't know what the process was.
No, that is a process within the JLU's. So we do have some of that's actually going on right now. So one of the things was, so they're putting in the towers up around Lincoln County, there's a lot of towers going out in Torrance and more towards Kirtland Air Force Base, and those towers could have a major impact on low-level training routes. So yes, we had worked on some legislation, one of the things we had an issue with was drones, private drones. There was some legislation that actually went before the New Mexico Legislature last year. But yes, we do work with the installations, and the installations work with the communities as well as their government representatives.
That is very helpful, I appreciate it. It's nice to have a committee that is looking at any potential issues for the future so that we don't ever feel like we don't know, you know, if there are problems out there. You know, we hear from our constituents, but it would be great to know from the installation themselves, and it's great to know that it's happening through you all, so we can always contact you or Gilbert to get any updates on that, so thank you.
Absolutely, I hope you will. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, thank you for being here.
Item 15, approve and authorize the county judge to sign an agreement between the County of El Paso and El Paso Disposal LP, from El Paso, for solid waste and recycling services at multiple county locations for a five-year contract term, contract number 2017-0919.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Judge Norma Palacios with the Public Works Department. This contract is basically to provide disposal of trash and recycled materials for county facilities. We currently have approximately 17 facilities that's as part of this contract. Anybody have any questions that I can answer?
And these are just our facilities that we utilize the... Okay.
That's right, just our facilities.
Okay. Questions, Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hegarty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 16, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the contract between the County of El Paso and T-Dyne Contractors LLC to replace a water heater and two water storage tanks at the jail annex, contract number 2017-0819. Funding is available in account CIP17, PWSO Jail, AMNT Renovations.
Norma Palacios, Public Works Department. The current boilers are approximately 20 years old, and the tanks are about 10 years old. The units are not able to regulate the temperature appropriately, and in order to be in compliance with the Texas Commission of Jail standards, it is necessary to replace these units.
So we have 20-year-old tanks at the annex?
Yes, sir, this isn't part of the expansion project, this is part of the original jail annex.
Perfect. Commissioner Hegarty, any questions?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Stout made the motion to approve, did we have a second?
Judge.
The judge, thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hegarty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Texas Department of Transportation Airport Project Participation Agreement for the Fabens Airport Business and Development Plan. Funds are available in account CP Fab Airport Cap Out Renov, contract number 2017-0922.
For the record, Norma Palacios, Public Works Department. In November of 2017, the Public Works Department staff reached out to Techstat about the need for a business and development plan. They agreed that it was a necessary tool and agreed to partner with the county, and they have also set up a $100,000 budget with a 10% match that the county would have to pay. So today, we're asking the court's acceptance of the agreement so we can move forward with the Airport Business and Development Plan.
I had a few questions very quickly.
Sure.
I know that the proposal or the contract was pretty technical, and I know that that was reviewed, and do you foresee there being any issues, one, with the collaboration with UTEP, which has been really great to ensure that this doesn't in any way infringe on the work that they're doing? And then, two, if the application to the FAA on the unmanned aerial systems, I know we're waiting to hear back on that, but whether or not we get awarded, I don't know, but if this would in any way infringe that...
No, they, first of all, UTEP will have input on this, on this plan, business plan, and we've met with them a couple of weeks ago, and we've talked about it, and so they'll get a copy of the draft before, we actually already have been working on a draft, so they'll get to provide their input. And we're basically running all this process through Techstat before we can proceed, so they are aware of what we're doing.
Thank you.
Behind the scenes, yes.
I had similar questions, so thank you for answering those. I also was reading in the contract that it talks about, I guess, I mean, we're committing ourselves to a 20-year agreement here with Techstat, and it talks about not being able to use the airport for non-aerial-related programming or things like that. Is that something that we want to tie ourselves to for 20 years? And also, it talks about, which is not something I have a huge problem with, but I still wanted to bring it up, is making sure that it says that we have to take all the money that's actually generated by the airport and be directly reinvested into the airport? I mean, is that something that we want to tie ourselves to for 20 years as well? Because, you know, there may be a point in the future where there's revenue generated by the airport, and we may want to use it for something else too, not just, you know, that's, those are concerns that I had with the contract itself.
I have, okay, so on the first question about the 20-year aerial purpose only, I would need to double-check this, but I believe I have read some previous agreements where we've already committed the airport for aerial purpose, not, to not use it for non-aerial purposes in the past, several times in the past. Where it is committed for aerial purposes only. The other part about the revenue, any revenue generated at the airport having to be invested only back into the airport for 20 years, I would need to look into that, we would need more time to look into that restriction.
Okay, I mean, I'm not saying that that's necessarily a bad thing, but, you know, we can't foresee in 20 years, you know, maybe there's some reason why we wouldn't want to do that, and we'd be obligated to do so.
Good morning, Cellones Public Works. In relationship with the funds that the airport generates, those funds have to stay within the airport. We couldn't be able to use the funding that we make out of the airport's revenue, whether it's the fuel or the tie-downs, have to remain with the airport to support the airport. We wouldn't be able to remove some of those funds to...
That's according to this contract, but right now, that's not the way, or is that the case right now?
No, that's the case right now, yes.
And that's the case, is that statute, or is that another contract that we have with somebody else, or what stipulates that?
Those are the regulations set forth by Techstat, because that's where we're getting the funds from, through Techstat. It goes through the FAA, but since Techstat is their, I guess, their agency, we don't necessarily deal with FAA, FAA just distributes the funds to Techstat, and at that point, Techstat distributes the funds to Texas. So Techstat is following the FAA regulations, so anything that we get, contracts, language from Techstat, comes straight from the FAA.
But I think to Commissioner Stout's question, so right now, even without this contract, any funds generated by the airport have to stay and be used at the airport, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's not due to a contract, it's just, that's the way it is because it's an airport regulated by the FAA.
Right.
And we don't make a lot of money on it anyway, and it needs a lot of repairs. I mean, right now, yeah, in 20 years, you don't know what the difference may be, but, I mean, those are just, you know, things that I saw in the contract that I had questions about. I don't necessarily have a problem moving forward with it, but I thought we should ask about it.
Commissioner Leon?
Norma, as everybody knows, I've got, as a matter of fact, I was out at the airport last week, and this study, this is the study we've been talking about for months, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And in your own opinion, how long will it take us to get the final version of the study completed?
This is only the business and development plan. UTEP's also going to work and be part of a master plan. So in this one, we're looking at approximately 18 months, 18 to 24 months to get this done.
Okay, so we're looking at probably the top portion would be two years before we get this done. And as you know, one of the areas that I question constantly is, we have an airport out there, but we have no hangar. And if we take this pace, it could be maybe four to eight years before we get a hangar out there, and it's not that hard to actually have somebody go out there and look at the site to see where the most appropriate location would be for this hangar. And I just, we're moving forward in a lot of directions, and I agree, we need this study, there's no doubt. But we also have to, I don't know if there's a way to speed up the acquisition of a new hangar, the building of a new hangar, but without that, we're just spinning our wheels.
And we're hoping to get the study done a lot sooner, I'm just saying, because of the contracts and the fact that it has to go through Techstat and then the FAA, there's some requirements that we have to meet. But we're also looking at possible other options so we can be able to get funding to build a new hangar. So in the background, we are doing, we're trying to acquire as much funding as possible and do as many projects as possible, and we're hoping to bring that to the court sooner than the 18 months.
No, and I know there's a lot of regulations that go into this, but I also know that we're, in my opinion, we're dragging our feet. And I know there's funding issues, but I would say that there's maybe three, possibly four hangars out there that the private sector was able to build out there, and they've got great planes out there. So I think we would be, I know, we would be losing a lot of, the lack of generating funds because of the lack of that hangar. And I just think we... And I just think we, we need to get our heads together to see how we can approach this, to get that thing completed within maybe two years.
We, yes, sir, we will. I will tell you also, I've been doing a little bit of research on like airport grounds management and I'm, I'm talking about developing at airports and how hangars are developed on airports. And we definitely need this plan, but we, we can look at our options as far as building a county hangar, but also a lot of hangars on airports are, are built and the hangar itself is built by a private party. So that's also why we need the plan to identify where hangars could be built by private parties. For example, out at the Santa Teresa Airport, there's only, I think, a very small section that is built and owned by the airport itself and the majority of development there has been done by the private sector. So the plan will help us in both, both cases, but we will move quickly as, and continue to update the court on where we are on a hangar for the county.
Okay, thank you.
And did we, hadn't we already started the ball rolling on doing this plan with our own funding and before, before we had this Techstat option, so it should, it should be in motion already, right?
Yes, we were just seeking additional funding and so we were able to secure this funding. But yes, there was $50,000 allocated to this effort.
Okay, I was gonna ask, how much did we actually allocate? It was 50? And so these are good, and, and so we're gonna get 90 from, from Techstat?
We say afford it technically.
Yes.
Because we're, our match is the 10,000.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the partnership with UTEP and I appreciate that you're working with them so closely because they're, I think the future of that airport really will in large part be due to the investment and the time and energy that UTEP is putting into it. So as long as they feel confident in this application and that it won't hinder them from their future work, then it'd be great.
No, we're meeting with them constantly and have communication with them, very good communication.
Thank you. I would move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioner's Court for final acceptance and approval. Item 18, approve and authorize the Public Works Department to submit a grant application to the Texas Department of Transportation, Techstat, for fiscal year 2019 Federal Transit Administration Fleet Replacement Grant for $310,000 with a county match of $310,000. Contract number 2018-0044.
Norma Palacios, Public Works Department. Techstat has issued a call for projects and this will give the county the opportunity to apply for the 2019 Fleet Replacement Grant. The Transit Division of Public Works has identified five qualifying vehicles or buses eligible for replacement. Today, we are asking the court's authorization to submit the grant application for this effort.
And our match is coming from?
We will put a CIP request to get the match for this.
And the buses are used for our rural transit program?
That's right.
How long have we had the buses?
About 20 years.
Move to approve.
How long have we had those buses?
Good morning, Court. Hopeton State of Fleet Operations Director. Currently, we have 20 buses. Seven of them is model year 2010. The average miles on those buses is about 360,000 miles, because each bus typically will get about 50,000 miles a year. We, we have eight, that's model year 2015. The average miles on those is 120,000 miles. And we have five, that's model year 2017, and the average miles on those are about 45,000 miles. So the grant that they're seeking is to replace five of the seven, that's model year 2010. Again, they're all approaching closer 400,000 miles.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Commissioner Stout.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all for that information. Appreciate it, Mr. State.
Thank you.
Budget and finance, item 19. Approve Amendment Number 17 to the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 Operating Budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by $284,323.91, thus increasing the overall
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Francisco Rios from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. This grant will increase the Homeland Security Interoperal Communications Grant by 210,085, all budgeted under equipment non-capital. Also, it will increase the COPS Community Policing Development by 74,238.91, under Training Materials by $17,489.92, indirect service by $6,748.99, the contracted services by $50,000. Also, federal grant, overall increase of $284,323.91. We ask for your favorable consideration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 20, Executive Session. Commissioner's Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 20A through 20F pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.087 and 551.071. The Court will reconvene to take official action. It is, let's see, 10:58 a.m. The Court will reconvene to take official action.[1033.83]
All county offices will be closed on Monday, February the 19th, 2018 in observance of the President's Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, February the 20th, 2018.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trent's Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x, dot com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or a current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
All county offices will be closed on Monday, February the 19th, 2018, in observance of the President's Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, February the 20th, 2018. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trent Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barrios started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
All county offices will be closed on Monday, February the 19th, 2018, in observance of the President's Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, February the 20th, 2018.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trent Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of
All county offices will be closed on Monday, February the 19th, 2018, in observance of the President's Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, February the 20th, 2018.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x dot com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or a current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epecounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Thank you. Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open session at 12:17 p.m. Item 21, discuss and take appropriate action regarding a Chapter 381 agreement with Project Falcon. No action on this item. Item 22, discuss and take appropriate action concerning the agreement with urban associates to build a new unit at the jail annex. No action on this item. Item 23, discuss and take action on the pending claim of Victor Castillo, County Attorney's File Number 002818LC. Could we please have a motion to deny this item? Thank you. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. And item 24, discuss and take appropriate action regarding grievance of Jacob L. Garcia, County Attorney's Case Number 028217GR.
Good afternoon, Judge. Commissioners Jed Unterekker, Assistant County Attorney. I am requesting a motion to pay Mr. Garcia his owed back pay, which we calculate to be the amount of $13,832.12.
So that was Commissioner Stout and Commissioner Perez?
Yes, aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that completes today's agenda.
Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned. Have a good afternoon.
Meeting is adjourned at 12:19 p.m.